Good evening and welcome to the July 19, 2021 Special Planning Commission Agenda. We will begin tonight with a roll call.
Chairman Baker.
Here.
Vice Chair Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Gerba.
Here.
Commissioner Geis.
Here.
Commissioner Ann Mark.
Item one is to discuss review zoning and subdivision materials and codes. And please say your name and your position, please.
Yeah, Mark Zizaw with Johnson and Associates. I'm a principal urban planner with the firm. I think I've met maybe a couple of you through the comprehensive plan update that we underwent over the last couple of years. So tonight, what we wanted to do is get in front of you all and talk about the zoning and subdivision regulations. We're in the very beginning stage of a full update of those two documents. And so what we wanted to do tonight is just review the comprehensive plan, the zoning codes and the subdivision regulations before we kind of embark on this, well, it's likely a nine-month journey for hopefully adoption in the first part of next year. So with that, I will jump in. The PowerPoint seems to have gone away. Thank you. So like I mentioned, here with me, I'm Mark Zizaw. With me tonight is Kelly Driscoll. She's an urban planner in our office. She's worked hard to put this together and will also be one of the main points of contact on this process as we move forward. So real quickly, you know, the comprehensive plan, like we talked about and what it says within the document, it's really setting the community vision for the next 20, 25 years. And that document is a guide for you all, for city council and for staff, to review zoning ordinance changes too. So ideally, decisions that are being made will be in line with the comprehensive plan, but it is there as a guide for you. And it outlines land use, there's demographics, transportation goals and other things. The zoning, those are the regulations. So the comprehensive plan's the guide. What you adopt as zoning regulations, that's kind of the letter of the law, what development has to abide by. And then the subdivision regulations, that's really defining and setting the regulations for your plats, any lot splits or any subdivision of land that seeks to be done within the city of Yukon. So hopefully this looks familiar. It's the cover of the Yukon Comprehensive Plan. So kind of the why, the plan sets forth fiscal goals, legislative, is based in legislative actions done by the state, and then it has some philosophical basis on how Yukon wants to grow. We went through, I think I mentioned, it was about a two-year process. We had multiple meetings with planning commission, city council. We did resident surveys. I might be jumping ahead a bit. We did a community-wide survey that was put within the water bill. We had about 250 responses through that, met with the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, Main Street, developers, pretty much anyone we thought that would have an interest in what Yukon's projected growth should be. So the first comprehensive plan was approved back in 1961 and had several updates throughout the years. But really, the plan that was adopted in 2020 was really the first full new comprehensive plan that the city had undertaken. So the structure of the plan, there's some demographics and information about Yukon's past growth and projected growth. But the main portions of the plan are land use, transportation, economic development, housing, parks and open space, and then public services and assets. That's utilities, public buildings and libraries. So it's eight chapters. There's an appendix. Within each chapter, it lays out goals, perceived issues, and then recommendations on how to address those. Those goals and those recommendations ideally are what form decisions both for bond issues, potential tax increases, planning commission decisions, city council decisions. It's really, again, just that reference guide when you're making decisions. So we're going to run through what some of those issues and the background are. So population, there was an increase in non-white population. The population growth was around 2% through the time period that we looked at, and then there was an aging population within Yukon. All of this, all of those things start to form a basis for how and why recommendations were made. For major employers, they were healthcare and social assistance, retail, and then food and beverage service and educational service. That was important to look at because when you get into your commuting patterns, what we found were 44% of people are commuting out of Yukon for work. And so what that affects are restaurants during the day. If most of your people are leaving for work, that means you're losing that entire daytime population. So trying to be cognizant and make sure from a land use standpoint, there's proper areas zoned for call centers, office buildings, primary jobs that would keep people here and allow businesses to have more access to people through other peak times of day. An interesting thing, less than 1% of people live and work within the city of Yukon. And then the last piece that we found, and there'll be a map in a second, I think there's a, there was always a perception that there was a lot of land left in Yukon, either for development or for agriculture. What we actually found was the opposite. There's very little. Bulk of Yukon is actually floodway and floodplain, which affects how you're going to be able to manage future population growth. So this was a slide that we showed during the comprehensive plan update. And what it shows is Canadian County is consistently one of the fastest-growing counties within Oklahoma. And so for Yukon specifically, how do you prepare for that growth and understand that growth and ensure that your residents are not displaced and housing prices can remain stable? So there are some articles on here that just kind of note how quickly this particular area of the metro is growing. It's, again, outpacing almost all of the rest of Oklahoma counties. Here's the map of developable area. What we found is that there's about 2,500 acres left to be developed, which is 15% of Yukon. The red dash through the middles, the floodway, the blue is the 100-year, and then that orange is the 500-year. There are portions of that orange that with some work in the floodplain may very well become developable. But you can see, it's actually cutting Yukon essentially in half. The work with the city engineer, it was unlikely that utilities or services are ever going to be extended north. So it leaves this developable area, everything south of that large blue swath. When you drill down further, you see that the areas, a lot of the land left to be developed is south of I-40 in the, you know, heavy commercial area. And then as you move west, west Yukon, within the plan, we identified for some light employment. It's up against a railroad track, river. It seemed like that was, if industry was going to come, with the new Frisco Road Interchange, it was possible that it could be there. So within the plan, we looked at the existing land uses, which you could see, the agricultural floodplain use takes up the vast majority of the area of Yukon. But low intensity, which would be kind of single-family residential, is the next largest category at 17.3. From a breakdown of land use, we found that Yukon is actually right in line with where they should, you should be in terms of retail and commercial development. I believe it's in the plan, but that number was about 25% of your land use should be dedicated towards services and retail. And when you look at the developed portion of Yukon, you fall in line with about where you should be.
Where do you put on that land use categories?
Sorry?
On the land use categories?
Mm-hmm.
In what category would you have placed the land that is being used by nonprofits?
So if it was, say, an office building, it would be categorized that way. So churches would fall into like a low-intensity type of land use.
What would it be, commercial? What would it be? It's none of those. A huge, a lot, the reason I'm asking this, not because we have a big, a large amount of Main Street, a large amount of Main Street is churches. And so I just wondered what category.
So I think, when we get to the future land use map, I think that's what we're projecting. So if there are, whether it be a church or a farm operation, we looked at areas that it made the most sense for, the most intense type of uses to go, to locate along kind of major thoroughfares. So along I-40, I think almost all of that, unless it was already developed, was predicted to become a high-intensity commercial. Along Main Street, as you head west, it has the infrastructure to handle a significant amount of vehicular traffic, and so that's where it was, you know, decided to move toward. So western, sorry, eastern Main Street, some west, western portions of Main Street, and then most of the I-40 corridor, what was high-intensity commercial. So while it may be a church today, that may have not been its highest and best use for the future. And so if that, if a church ever came up for a potential rezoning for development, you'll be able to look at this map and kind of see what level of development might be appropriate. And so there are certainly churches likely within every single category.
So we don't parse out tax generation, tax generating versus non-tax generating properties?
We did not, no.
Okay.
So to kind of clarify, right, I think what you're saying, Bill, is that like what we talked about last meeting was why church being in a high-intensity area, it's categorized as a high-intensity even though it's not tax generating because it is in that predatal zone, if you will.
Right. So it wasn't necessarily, had anything to do with, it would be retail or it would be commercial. It'd have to do with, that through these meetings with staff, with city engineer, planning commission and council, that those areas were best suited to handle more intense types of development.
Because of location.
Yes. And so I was going to run through a couple of these land use categories, the first being employment land. Some of the employment land, if you look on the eastern part, that's, it was owned some form of industrial, light industrial. It was along the railroad tracks. But everything east, there's a railroad there, it had some decent highway access with the Frisco Interchange coming online, and it was undeveloped. And through discussions with neighbors, with businesses, it seemed unlikely that that would be a single-family residential area. So the employment land, it really seeks to, in hope, or in hopes that when someone comes in with a development, it comes in with some sort of primary job type of business. It would be located there with little impact on existing residential neighborhoods. There are some agricultural estates there, but with the right type of redevelopment mitigation, it would be compatible. One of the design considerations here that we heard throughout the entire comprehensive planning process was a desire to have more attractive arterials, more landscaping, you know, potentially wider sidewalks. Those are some of the things that came out of the comp plan discussions that we hope to influence the zoning code and subdivision regulations. Medium intensity, I think this is one where you all will have some of the most leeway and discussion about. There are aging shopping centers throughout Yukon, particularly on the eastern side, that might be prime for redevelopment in the future. If, as you've seen, older tenants move out, more of the heavy commercial, newer big-box retailers move toward I-40, you'll be faced with the decision at some point of what to do with an aging shopping center that had hundreds of parking spaces and big box. If it is not to be redeveloped as retail, you know, we outlined some site design considerations of what it could be. It could be some form of residential, it could be mixed-use, it could remain retail. But when the decision comes to you, we kind of outlaid some considerations of what type of density that might look like, and then mitigation techniques, because some of these are adjacent to single-family residential. So buffers, screening, what setbacks could look like. A lot of that will still fall within your purview, but we were trying to draw attention to the fact that there are these aging shopping centers that at some point, from what we've seen in other parts of the metro, will come before you with a larger redevelopment plan. And then the high-intensity, kind of touched on this, similar, within the plan, there are mitigation techniques. If it is next to a lower intense use, again, that comes down to screening setbacks, a lot of which would be worked out through the PUD, potentially the PUD process of the zoning and site planning process. Residential densities, if residential was to occur, it was likely that these are areas that could be for the higher density. So where putting a large mixed-use or townhome product right next to single-family might not make sense for the city of Yukon, putting it along the I-40 corridor where roads are improved and all the infrastructures there might be best. So this is certainly a guide. I know there's always discussion about it, but it still falls within the purview of the commission and city council on individual applications. The other area of opportunity that we saw through the research was the downtown area. If you've seen, if you've been to downtown Edmond recently and the kind of transition that's occurred there, it's been pretty incredible over to the last four or five years. I went to college at UCO and it was all antique stores 10 years ago, 15 years ago. It's not anymore. And, you know, I think Yukon has certainly the bones and the structure, and you're seeing some of those local restaurants come into Main Street, which has been great and has really been activated. And so what we wanted to draw attention to was possibly through the zoning code update to look at some changes to make development in an urban way a little bit easier, because most zoning codes over the last 50 or 60 years have made that type of development essentially illegal. Building up to your property line without the setback, some of that density, a mix of uses in one building. So we hope to look at that, and then other recommendations here was potentially an independent study of Main Street to come up with its own recommendations for how Yukon can grow it, make it better, and make it even more of a tourism draw. So moving on kind of to the zoning, the zoning's a set of rules that govern how the land may be used and development standards for Yukon. And then just reiterating that your body will make recommendations and city council ultimately approves or denies applications in front of them. Some background, just on zoning, for those that don't know, Euclid Ohio was essentially the birth of zoning in a lot of ways. There was a land dispute, ended up at the Supreme Court, and the US Supreme Court ultimately found that the city, within reason or within a scope, can dictate some land use regulations as long as they're doing it to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the community. And so that's what established pretty much modern-day zoning and what we've seen spread throughout the country. What Yukon zoning code is today, it's called a Euclidian code, which comes from this. And so we'll kind of get into this in a few slides, but what we're proposing is essentially a very similar type of code that Yukon has with some more flexibility and modernizing it a little bit. But we are not seeking to stray far from the current regulations. Here's the current zoning map. Again, you can see the bulk of Yukon is owned agricultural, which is, again, not surprising given everything that's north. So Yukon's code today is found within Appendix A of the ordinances. Our hope here is that we will have a unified development code at the end, which will be its own chapter. Everything will be found within it, signs, landscaping, land use. So making it as easy as possible and as user-friendly, all for the commission, the city council, the residents, the developer, not having to pull from different chapters and an appendix here and appendix there. Having everything in one code, we think, is, will make it the most simple process possible. Within it are your base zoning districts. There's an example here, C1 Office allows office uses. It's a similar type of code. We're not seeking to change that much, but again, just make it more user-friendly. And then you allow for PUDs to address performance and impacts for different projects. There are certainly benefits of PUDs and there are negatives, like with most things. They're individually negotiated. It can be an unpredictable process, both for an applicant and planning commission and city council. And then ultimately, the administration of it. If you think about a zoning code, a community will have one zoning code for its staff, for its citizens. They know what every district's supposed to be and how to administer it. As you move forward with PUDs, it leaves every single property basically a mini zoning code for everybody. And so as much as we can standardize what you've all been adopting through PUDs, we'd like to in the code. So if, if a 15-foot landscape buffer has become pretty much the minimum acceptable solution in PUDs, we hope to just put that into the code so you don't have to negotiate that every time. If street trees on 20-foot centers, or if you've decided that your maximum sign height is 20 feet, that's what we look for in the code to make your jobs a little bit easier and you could focus more on an individual application than kind of what could be insufficient sections of the zoning code. And so within the zoning code, there are nine articles, addresses zoning districts, board of adjustment, administration, amendments, and then there are those other chapters that are addressing landscaping, building standards and signage. And this is a breakdown of those nine articles. So what we're proposing and is kind of the standard for zoning right now is a hybrid code. A hybrid code is taking the Euclidian code and adding some modern elements to it, more visuals, more graphics. So rather than telling someone in two paragraphs that they have a 25-foot setback, it's a picture that shows what a 25-foot setback and five-foot yard, five-foot sides and a 15 or 20-foot rear would be, and it shows you a building envelope. And so it helps people better understand all of the planning techniques that sometimes I forget that not everyone knows and maybe planning commissioners do as well. And then we go into the subdivision regulations. That's Appendix B of the Code of Ordnances. This is what dictates your street width, your right-of-way widths, alleys, easements, lot and blocks. And then really, it's just, it sets up how you divide your land. So this one is certainly the more technical design guide or design regulation that, you know, engineers and services have to abide by. And so this one, it's really just making sure that all of the standards within are sufficient and then, you know, updating as needed. And through, through both the subdivisions, zoning code, and I will mention this in a bit, we will be back before you regularly so you see what's coming. But if at any point in time, you have thoughts about zoning code or subdivision regulations of something you'd like to see updated or you've noticed as an issue, please let Kathy, Mitchell, myself know. We'll be happy to add that to the list to make sure we address it. These are the articles within the subdivision regulations, design standards, procedure, submission requirements, required improvements, adoption and amendments, and then the standards and requirements for sidewalks. So again, we think it makes the most sense from what we've seen nationally is having your subdivision regulations and your zoning code, landscaping, signage, all in one document to make this as easy as possible for everybody. Which kind of leads to why we're here and where this project's going. We will be updating everything on this list. We heard through the comp plan, public engagement process, landscaping should be increased, but also building materials, that there needs to be some minimum standards set and those need to be looked at. So more masonry requirements to help build some sturdier, more longer-lasting structures, and not just for commercial, but possibly also, you know, residential, single-family residential as well. And so our timeline, I mentioned, our goal is to be done and back before you, working through an approval process in the first part of next year. But right now, we're in this very early stage. We've had a couple of meetings with city staff to hear feedback, and we're going back through our comprehensive plan notes for sections that might need to be addressed. There will be some community feedback periods. We'll go right into drafting code, and as we complete sections, we'll be sharing them with staff. Our goal with, with your commission in particular is to be back quarterly to go over updates, to share sections of those code, sections of the code, and then any feedback you have, we can be working on, on a smaller scale rather than handing you, you know, 200 pages of code for you to review and offer all your feedback at one point. So we're trying to make it as easy as a process on everyone as possible. And then hopefully, finalization and adoption in the first part of next year. So some of the initial findings that our team has found and identified with city staff is there are some dated language and terms. When you have a code that goes as in-depth on uses, that an engineering office is different than an architectural office, standardizing that and making it easier to administer, hopefully that leads to less rezoning applications before you all. It's lacking graphics and illustrations, which is typical of a code at that time. Throughout, and this is in no way unique to Yukon, but repetition and conflicting standards. When you update it over time, you might have one place that says sidewalk fee and lujos are acceptable, and in another place it says sidewalks shall be built all the time with no exceptions. When you have those two, your staff's love trying to figure out, well, what do we do? And it's typically send them to board of adjustment or send them to planning commission and they'll work it out. Align the new code with changes in state statutes and case law. Instances where codes do not align with the new comprehensive plan, that's always to be expected after a comprehensive plan has been updated and the codes haven't. And then we're going to look at the number of conditional uses to see if there's a better way to handle that. And then generally, the code in its current state is fairly difficult to use with different sections of the code, spread throughout different sections of the municipal code. Which, to give an example of what does it mean to align the codes with the new comprehensive plan, and we'll pick on the transportation chapter. Through the subdivision regulations, what we can control is encourage subdivisions to be connected to adjacent land use, to adjacent subdivisions, and we can encourage and enforce through proper regulations that commercial developments also be connected. So sharing driveways, throughout the comprehensive plan process, we heard a lot about traffic in particular parts of town. And when you go out there, what you see is it is curb cut after curb cut after curb cut. And what that leads to is drivers stopping, trying to make left turns across, you know, two or three lanes. So a way to help mitigate that is to have shared driveways and those parking lots to be internally connected. So rather than five or six driveways, you might have, you know, a thousand feet with one or two. And then they, they kind of work that out through internal cross-access. And then revise the existing development codes to require enhanced streetscapes along commercial and residential developments. That could be done through the zoning code in the landscape chapter. Parking lots have to be heavier, more heavily landscaped. We can change the way or where trees can be located. Sometimes too much landscaping is placed in the back of a building, which doesn't benefit anyone. Pulling it out to the street and just making your corridors a little bit greener, a little bit more attractive, and providing a little bit more shade in the parking lots. And so through this process, we will likely hold one or two open houses where we will invite engineers, developers, sign companies, anyone who might have an interest in seeing what these regulations look like at the end of the day. Hopefully, we have a little bit better participation than we did during the comprehensive plan from an engineer's standpoint, but they're the ones that are the most affected by this because they're the ones designing to the new regulations and standards. So we'd really like their input now so that you all don't hear about it at planning commission after an adoption. And then possibly some targeted surveys, and then I mentioned regular meetings with planning commission and city council. We'll also be going to board of adjustment. Board of adjustment in a similar way, but different, is kind of uniquely qualified to offer problem areas of the zoning code because they're seeing what people are always trying to vary. So if there's one variance that they're seeing once a month or five times a year, then we might need to look at, well, if they're being granted, why is the variance needed in the first place? Maybe we can just update the code to allow for it. An example might have been your lot coverage. I know that's working through, but if, if a lot coverage says maximum of 30%, and they're granting variances for 34%, well, maybe that's a thing in the zoning code that could be tweaked enough to not require that variance application. So recommendations on kind of where we move forward was to form an advisory board for the project. It's mostly with city staff, which we feel we've done. Consolidate all of the development regulations into one unified code. Consolidate and clarify the land use categories. Formalize and clarify the administration and process. On that one, what we really want to see... On that one, what we're, what we really want to see are, are making sure the applications and that any applicant knows the process, it's clear and understandable, and making sure the application is everything the city needs to properly review the proposal. Again, examine the conditional use process and their designations, hopefully cutting back on the number of conditional uses. Aligning the code with state statutes and the comprehensive, comprehensive plan. Streamline the PUD process, clarify PUD language and process. An example of that and what that's getting at is possibly looking at, rather than a PUD being an overlay, possibly the PUD becoming the designation. So right now, if you hear a PUD, you hear two items. One is a change of the base zoning district, the other one's the PUD overlay. That can be difficult to administer, so what we're going to explore is what does it look like if it's just a PUD in place without a base zoning? And clarify regulations and I think give you all a little bit more control. And then establish an SPUD district and process. What we want to look at is for sites that are smaller, say an anchor, a project might not fit directly into an existing zoning category and might need some extra oversight or review or negotiation. An SPUD process would be a simplified planned unit development, which would be for smaller PUDs. So right now, you have a minimum lot size for a PUD, for an applicant to apply for that. So if someone falls under that minimum lot size, they're not eligible for the PUD process. And then update the street sidewalk and public improvement standards. Again, a lot of that came out of conversations on the comprehensive plan. So our next step is really to continue to dig in with staff and start drafting some of this code. While we're doing that, we'll be working on our outreach and then coming back to you quarterly with updates of where we're at, progress, and hopefully sections of code for you all to take a month, two months, and review to make sure that you all feel we're on the right track. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know I went through that fairly quickly.
Good. We're good. Questions?
I have a question. Have you considered, if I didn't catch this, if you did, any type of overlay district like I see in other municipalities? By the way, I'm a sign guy, so I know all about coding.
Yep.
I-40 corridor, for example, Main Street Design District, et cetera?
That's what we're, that's what we're looking into. I think the hope particularly for Main Street is that there would be, we have the potential to do it maybe through just a base district without needing an overlay, but certainly overlays are going to be looked at as we get.
The way I look at overlays is it's a way to kind of specify what you're looking to do with Main Street, for example. It may be zoned commercial, et cetera, but for example, like the Plaza District, they encourage a lot of walk-up rules, if you will. So when it comes to signage, for me, everything is small, very toned down. It's more about people on the sidewalk than it is people driving up the street. So I see value in that. I see value in being able to dictate what, where we can tweak the rules a little bit in I-40, same with Main Street as well, any, any other neighborhoods that we may see fit.
Agreed. And if there are any particular parts of town, Main Street, I-40, that you think need special attention, yeah, certainly let us know.
Right now, we're in a, an unpleasant time between the comprehensive plan and the codes. And so things that are coming to us now, we have a wonderful comprehensive plan that we like to bring up to people who bring stuff before us, but there are no codes. So what's, I'm sure it's hard to put a calendar date, but when would you say we would have the new codes?
Well, the, the hope is that we are done drafting and it is working through the approval process by February of next year. So if we make the assumption that you all have seen enough of the code, the city council seen enough of the code and they were comfortable to move it through, you'd probably be looking at April to work through the public hearing and adoption process. This is certainly always the awkward time for every municipality when they've adopted a comprehensive plan and working through a zoning code or a subreg update, trying to administer goals and policies while working with older regulations. Oklahoma City adopted their code six years, or sorry, their comp plan six years ago? 2015, so six years ago? And they're on track for another five years for a code update. So they're looking at 11 years of this awkwardness, and I'm typically at planning commission every two weeks there, and there is certainly awkwardness.
And it looks like it.
Yeah.
I'd say it, it'd go to Oklahoma City. When I go to Edmond, it doesn't look like it. It looks like they have codes.
Yeah.
And signage is.
Oklahoma City's hot and heavy in their discussions about signage, and it's a big topic. So I appreciate the fact of bringing in sign contractors, just kind of speak the expertise on the matter.
Right. And specifically with signage, there's no other experts quite like the sign folks to help draft code. They're well-versed in both the constitution side of it and then knowing what the clients and the developers and businesses need to operate.
Well, and then relating municipalities as well, and seeing strengths and weaknesses from, from town to town, if you will, all over the state.
Right.
Well, since you brought up constitution, I wouldn't have mentioned it otherwise. The, the example you gave, an aged shopping center changes to R2. Let's just say that happened. The way our taxation is, it's a gain for the county and a loss for the city. We are the, not the county planning commission. So is, is that something that we can legally use in our thought process? Mr. Reiner?
I'm not sure I followed what you're saying.
There's a shopping center aging, it's fallen down.
Right.
We're going to mow it down. It's going to change to R2. That's going to be county tax and a loss at city tax. We are the city planning commission. Our, can, any, any sane person would use that in their thought process. Can we use that in our thought process?
Yeah, you have to be careful because that, you know, when it take away someone's right to use their property for its highest of misuse, which could be changing over time, as he suggested, maybe these suburban shopping centers with acres of parking lot may be, that we all grew up with, may be a thing of the past. And so you'll have to, you know, the city will have to get creative about other sources of revenue, I think, if, if you're changing that.
Yeah, I'm certainly not an attorney. I would just go to be an urban planner. But I, I agree with what was said. I think the, from a policy standpoint, I think what is outlined in the comprehensive plan is to ensure that you all are, to the best of your ability, preserving the correct percentages of land use so that you can maintain a healthy commercial sector. So while it's not necessarily getting its sales tax dollars, what that section of the comprehensive plan is getting at is if you rezoned everything in Yukon to single-family residential or two-family residential, you are not able to provide services to your citizens properly.
Well, exactly. So if you change a C3 to R2 and you build a giant R2, then I have something I cannot provide services for because I lost the city tax money to do that with. It seems like a logical argument to me. You know, I'm saying.
It may be tested soon.
To say that we don't think about that is, we all think about that, you know.
I think we have to.
Because you also, you have to put yourself in the position of a landowner who wants to get the most value for his land, given it's highest and best use. And maybe the highest and best use isn't its current use, but something in the future.
But if he's going to come in and build and go away, like often happens, they don't care if they don't have adequate water pressure. That's not their job. Their job was to, to build the thing and, and get in their Escalade and leave town. So I, you know, I just, we're thinking about it, Mitchell, so maybe, you know, get out in front of the train with the.
Hopefully, if we have one of these large old shopping centers that does go away and some type of residential comes in, we would try and hopefully try to do some kind of mixed use that would allow some of those sales tax items to still stay in that area. So it's always our intent to try to maintain as much sales tax as we can. The uses have changed, there are smaller uses. That is something that's going to be interesting for us in the next several years. You know, he could probably go through and tell you about all the uses that've changed. You know, we're seeing a lot of kiosk-type businesses or hearing about them, you know, like Booger King and McDonald's are going smaller spaces and drive-through, which if you're like me, you don't want to go through the drive-through unless you have to. You want to go in, sit down, and take a few minutes, so. But hopefully, with those changes, we'd be able to work in some kind of revenue stream still that the city would receive.
Yeah, the, the need for a giant pit of plastic balls that little kids are climbing in.
Yeah.
Is not quite what it was a few years ago.
No.
I can speak to that, too, if you'd like.
I, I think now, some of the most common things we're seeing are like Dutch Brothers coffee, Scooter's coffee, these, probably not even 500-square-foot boxes, it's just a large drive-through.
A harvest moon is a small footprint that generates enormous sales tax.
Right.
For the city, et cetera.
Yeah, I think the, the days of the large big box are fading almost everywhere.
I can almost guarantee you, you will see McDonald's change their, their mentality on businesses and the way that they build their restaurants moving forward. I used on the two here in town, and I would give anything to have gotten rid of that lobby and focused strictly on that drive-through, and those folks that were running that drive-through through COVID would agree. You'll see it coming.
Yeah, and I think, I think COVID, I think certainly changed a lot, but not even from a, a retail standpoint, but I, I think what our market has seen is like, if you look at industrial space, the need for small-scale kind of affordable industrial space for the plumber, the electrician, who's got a one or two, two-person business. We're seeing these start popping up all over, and it's because the medical marijuana growing facilities have swallowed up almost all of the industrial space throughout the entire metro. And so you end up with uses like that, that in almost every zoning code, it's considered industrial, but it's all contained within, within a building, there's no outdoor storage, it's a garage door, basically, and it's permitted almost nowhere. And so we've, we've worked in Mustang, Norman, Mustang, Moore, Oklahoma City, trying to permit some of these like really small-scale, basically indoor garages for an electrician to park their truck during, during the night and swap out a vehicle during the day. But those are some of the land use, I think, challenges that we're seeing with, with some older codes. It just didn't foresee that use.
The, the, the lack of usable industrial and commercial, industrial space, you know, electrician, you know, that kind of thing, is promoting the use of these giant storage facilities that probably 10% to 20% of those are actually operating businesses out of storage facility garages. So anything you could do to get us out in front of that because it'll, it's currently kind of unenforceable. Does this have any effect on enforcing plating? Plating is, has been difficult for us to enforce. It's almost not, I think it's been appealed every time. I can't imagine if we turned out a replat, it's always appealed or, you know, taken to court. Does, the, the code you're going to write make our plating more enforceable?
That is certainly the hope. You know, as, as part of the, the staff that reviews and writes the staff reports that come to you all, I mean, we recognize, you know, the, the challenges of the replat of the replat of the replat of Yukon Crossing.
Right.
Right? Like, that, that's difficult to maintain, both for the city, but it's also difficult for users to understand. And so we want to get at like, why is that replat having to continually occur? So that you all, you know, are seeing the applications you need to see, but also not putting yourselves in a situation where you're having to, you know, deny or approve something that may not have even had to come before you in the first place.
Chris has got any more questions? No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mitchell, any, any final words of wisdom?
Not today.
Fresh out.
Anyone else in the audience have anything to bring? Step forward, say your name.
Hi, my name is Leah Brown. I live here in Yukon. I'm also a Realtor with McGraw Realtors here in Yukon. I just want to say I'm so pumped to be here because I'm thrilled with the future of Yukon and all that development is happening. With that being said, as you guys are reviewing, making changes to ordinances and codes and things like that, I would love for you to consider allowing Airbnbs as well. There are other areas in the, in the metro that do allow them. We do have some Airbnbs that are in Yukon, but they're Oklahoma City limits. Airbnb does, or, and, and other platforms similar to that, do take taxes for, for the city, so you do make city taxes off of those, just like you would with hotel, it's a hotel tax. They're also very good neighbors because you have to take very good care of your property to get good reviews, good renters. They also increase home values because if you go in with an Airbnb, you're going to bring your house up to as high a quality as you can to get the most short-term rent. We are, like I said, we are current, we do currently have some Airbnbs in the city, but they're Oklahoma City, so they are the ones actually getting those tax dollars. And I'm told that they are rented almost all the time. So I would love to suggest that we allow Airbnbs here in the city of Yukon as well. I just went under contract on a home last week that I was super pumped to turn into an Airbnb with the intent of highlighting Yukon, decorating it with canvases of Yukon, encouraging my renters to visit all the local Yukon restaurants and businesses. So there's a real potential there with bringing, as we've got the potential Main Street stuff going on and everything else, to just continue with the encouragement of tourism here in Yukon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question about that, to consider zoning. To run an Airbnb, is there a specific zoning that it needs to fit into? I'll just, I don't know, Mitchell might know or.
So, and Mitchell can correct me if I'm wrong. I think currently, it's not expressly permitted within Yukon for, for a permit. But if you look at Oklahoma City, they've handled it in the way that if you live within it, you're, you can Airbnb it without much of an issue. If you're seeking to use a, use it as an Airbnb and you're not living within it, you go to the board of adjustment to get a special exception for it. They track it, they have a list, you become registered, so they could track it that way. And then it comes up for, is it annual renewal? Or every three, it's annual or every, every couple of years. But if there are complaints against it, noise complaints, I think that's been the most common, common, common thing that's been seen is if it's been noted for like bachelor or bachelorette parties and it's in the middle of a neighborhood and it becomes, you know, basically a party house. At that point, that they review it more carefully and potentially can revoke it at, at the renewal stage. But there are different ways to do it, and a lot of cities are taking different stances. But certainly, if it's something that, that there's a will or a desire to put it in the code and have some sort of process to work through, we can, we can definitely look at that and propose some options.
A lot of HOAs address that probably through, I think.
Right, that, there are, there are HOA, that HOA covenants and restrictions that would be a private matter outside of any of the city policies.
It's just considered a subplot, yes. Just for our massive TV audience, want to make sure that, you said it's not expressly permitted. It is expressly not permitted right now. So you're close. It's expressly not permitted. Our hundreds of thousands of viewers have.
So how do we explore this option, then?
We're basically in the process now.
So it's included in some of the stuff that you're working on as well? I am very much interested in this because I've been very vocal about the need to curb rental properties in this town, and I believe this is a way to, to curb that, if you will. I like the idea of somebody renting my house for a weekend rather than renting my house and never mowing their yard and never doing any landscaping. So this is, this is intriguing just because I personally have thought about doing this myself. Maybe not in Yukon, but in Colorado or wherever, so.
Yeah, I, I think we, we could certainly add it to the list and we'll, we can look into it and propose potential options for it. I think it's important to note that in any of the zoning categories, if, if we have a zoning category for Airbnbs or an approval process, by having it in the code does not necessarily mean it's automatically. mean it's automatically granted or given. All that purview still falls within the board that it, you know, the process in which it needs to go through. So, if it was zoning, it'd be Planning Commission, City Council. So, I think that's the goal of the code is to make it, to make sure it's modern and has everything it needs, but ultimately left to the discretion for different land uses in different parts of town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the special meeting? This meeting is adjourned. We'll re-adjourn in 10 minutes for the regular meeting.